Everybody take a seat, please. All right, we are going to start the public hearing process on each one of these ordinances. Our attorney will read the ordinance and what we're going to be talking or giving public comment on. I have some blue cards. I'll call your name out when we get to that particular ordinance. Once I call out your name, if you come up to podium, you have three minutes to speak. Just give your name and where you're from, your address for the public record. Up first is item A, second reading of ordinance 1828 CC. Mr. Attorney.
Yep, we've got the second reading of ordinance number 18-28-CC. An ordinance of the City of Destin relating to city waterways, providing for additional findings of fact, providing for the amendment of section 5-2 obstructing channels, unlawful anchoring, mooring, or docking, providing for several ability, and providing for an effective date. And this is a public hearing.
At this time, we'll take any comments from the public. Just raise your hand if you'd like to speak. Everybody wants to watch the game. All right, do we have any? I need to entertain a motion here.
I move to approve ordinance 18-28-CC on second reading.
Second.
I have a motion and I have a second. Any further discussion? Vote is unanimous. Eyes have it, so moved. Mr. Attorney.
We have the second reading of ordinance 18-27-CN. An ordinance of the City of Destin of Okaloosa County, Florida, relating to the purchase of certain real property, providing for authority, providing for findings of fact, providing for city council approval of a contract for purchase of property located at 108 Cibert Avenue, Destin, Florida, and providing for an effective date. And this is a public hearing.
Okay, has anyone in the audience like to speak on this item under public hearing? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll go ahead and make the motion. I move that the city council approve ordinance 18-27-CN on second reading and direct the city manager to take the necessary steps to complete the purchase of the property.
I have a motion, second. And I have a second. Any further discussion? Vote is unanimous, so moved. Mr. Attorney.
We have the first reading of ordinance number 18-23-LC. An ordinance of the City of Destin, Florida, amending the official zoning map as referenced in the Land Development Code, section 7.12.01A2 zoning maps to include a change in the zoning designation of an 11.543 acre area of land located on US Highway 98, Destin, Florida, from commercial general CG to town center mixed use TCMU, providing for authority, providing for findings of fact, providing for jurisdiction, providing for zoning map amendment, providing for incorporation into the Land Development Code, providing for conflicting provisions, providing for several ability, and providing for an effective date. And this is a quasi judicial hearing. Could I have the applicant please stand up and be sworn in? Mr. Clerk, if you could please swear in the applicant.
Please rest your right hand and state your name. The sworn or affirmed testimony you will give in this proceeding will be the truth.
Yeah, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Cop at this point.
As you all know, this item has been before you once before on first reading. It was in November. At that time, the applicant made a presentation and you all had requested some additional information and ultimately continued the item. At the applicant's request, they are back and I will turn it over to the applicant to provide the additional information to you at this time.
Hey, okay, well, thank you. Yeah, Park Lamerts, I live at 5156 Meadow Lake Drive in Dunwoody, Georgia. So we just wanted to get back on the agenda. I know it was tabled in November due to lack of information or more clarification that was requested by council. And I think we have sent you over. We are now a little more further down the line with our plan. And I believe we sent a site plan over that I think was attached to the agenda. Is that right? Showing more of what we're doing and the change. So, you know, for, just a refresher, we are requesting a change from the GC zoning. And this was one of the properties that was discussed earlier. So a change from the GC zoning to TCMU. Our development is a multifamily development and the current zoning does allow for that at the same unit count per acre that we have here. It just doesn't allow for long-term rentals. It's only for six-month rentals. So in order for us to do this development, we would want to have, you know, a Class A property, which, you know, in that regard would need to be a long-term rental property. And we also noted in an email that we sent over that we would be willing to condition the property and the rezoning to condition against any uses that the city finds unwanted or any noxious uses. And we would also be willing to condition it on our closing of the property. So if we did not close, it would revert back to the GC zoning.
Any council members have any questions?
I just want to make a clarification on that. It is true that they would need this rezoning for the long term because the CG allows for short-term multifamily, but the density is not exactly the same. Under the commercial general, it's 16.9, and under the TCMU, it's 24. The height, the four stories, is the same for either district.
And I think from what I meant by that is this is 11.4 acres and we currently have 192 units, which equates to 16.9.
And again, that's great and everything, but if you are doing a rezoning, they are not bound to this plan. This is for informational purposes.
Sure.
And now how, I'm not sure if this is a question for you, but, you know, we're in the process of getting our fume and our zoning maps correct. Will this adversely affect that or is this just part of the process? Because this is kind of what we were thinking about, that zoning anyways, correct?
They are related and it was suggested to the applicant to wait on that, but the applicant, I understand, is under contract to purchase the property and so their timeline didn't really allow them. They elected not to wait. If you were to rezone the property to keep it consistent with the current comp plan and not make changes to the future land use map as far as the TCMU for this property, you'd be administratively rezoning their property ultimately. But if you make changes to the future land use map, it could adversely impact them.
Ms. Bright.
So the map that we're, or the plan that we're looking at of the apartments and stuff, just kind of give us an idea of what could be there. You may be building there and has nothing to do with really...
As far as what this plan is?
I'm sorry?
Do you mean what kind of plan, like what kind of development this is? Or just what could be here outside?
Yeah, I mean, it's, I mean, it's just, all this is, is giving us something to look at that could be built there.
Sure.
There's a whole lot of questions about this plan, but...
Yep. So this is, yeah, one of the TCMU allowable uses would be long-term multifamily. And this, this plan, yeah, and this is what, there would be retail on the front of it. And then on the back, there would be a multifamily property. And then we would also be giving over to the city a right-of-way for the future Matty Kelly extension, which, you know, may happen down the road at some point, but for interconnectivity.
That the city would, that the city would pay to build?
We would build, we would, yeah, we would, we would grant you the property and we would build up to our property line and then obviously wouldn't build the rest of it.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Any further discussion? Go ahead, Ms. Ramswell.
So what you have laid out here, does this equal the 192 units you just described?
It does.
And which density was that based on, commercial general or TCMU?
That's just, that's just our plan and our density, what we need to have the right parking spaces. And some of this will change, obviously, when we get into planning and permitting. But this is based on, you know, commercially, the type of properties we do are generally around this sort of density and it's three-story product.
Which density, though, did you use to calculate and lay this out?
It just, that's, that's just the number of units that we wanted. And it just happens to be right at the density of the short-term of the GC.
So this is based on the 16.9 commercial general?
It is.
And it's 192 units?
That's right. Yeah, and it's just, you have a, excuse me, when we're doing three-story construction, we have a certain amount of parking spaces that we need for the residents, a certain amount of green space and amenity space, and that takes all this into consideration.
Have you factored into consideration the traffic impact?
We have. I mean, we've looked at it and we've looked at the other uses that could be there, like shopping centers and things like that. And we also do a lot of retail development. And we know that, you know, I mean, this obviously will add traffic, but so would a shopping center, which would actually take more trips per day than a multifamily property.
Okay, I guess I was just trying to, so if we actually rezoned this or made the zoning in alignment with the flume to TCMU, the density would actually increase. So if that occurred, would you then want to reconfigure and add more units?
I don't, at this time, we would not because we, like I mentioned, we have to have a certain amount of parking and a certain amount of green space. And unless we wanted to build a parking deck to increase our units, I don't think that would be viable.
So if we, if it maintained at commercial general, the problem you would have then is that it's not short, or it's short versus long?
Yes, it's short-term. I think your, your max is six-month rental periods.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Destin.
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, I don't really have a whole lot of heartburn with giving you the long-term opening.
Yeah.
But simply changing you over to the TCMU is, I have no guarantees that if you don't change your mind, you throw in a parking deck, we've just increased your density.
Sure.
Let's see, if you were at 17, you're right at 16.9, another 24 units per acre and you've got 11.5, that's about another 82 units that could be put on there.
Yep.
And you seem like a great guy and you're telling me that you're not going to do that, but without assurances.
Sure.
And we're still in this process, like Ms. Cop said, that at this next workshop, we're going to have this big sort of overarching discussion on the future land use of TCMU and do those densities still match what our vision of Destin in this central area will look like? So I'm not saying no forever, but I'm probably going to say no tonight.
Okay, and that's, and we would be willing to, you know, for future consideration, limit the density conditionally.
Ms. Cop. To answer, don't we have certain things in our land development code that puts them in a position where they do have to have X amount of green space? And if they want amenities like a pool and gazebo or clubhouse, stuff like that?
Yeah, this, so this would just be for the rezoning. They'd be permitted to do anything the zoning district allows. And then they would still have to go through the process of the technical review committee and all of those reviews before they would get any kind of permitting.
And they would have to do a development order, which we would come back and approve or disapprove, correct?
Yes.
So if you're worried about...
But you would not be able to deny a development order based on density if the density of the zoning district allows a higher density.
That's right. So what we, I guess what we take into consideration is we just keep it zoned the way it is and we get some more t-shirt shops, or we get a nice high-rise apartment complex built. So that's basically what we're looking at. So. No? I don't think so. Karen.
Well, I was just going to make the motion if there's, unless there's not a, there's not a public hearing on this, right?
There is a public hearing.
There is a public hearing? Okay, well, can I make the motion and then we'll do a public hearing or do I need to wait?
You can, however the mayor wants to do it.
All right. I move the city council approve ordinance 18-23-LC, amending the official zoning map change to the zoning designation of the property on US Highway 98 from a commercial general to a town center mixed use on first reading and direct staff to bring it back for second reading.
Second.
I got a motion, I got a second before we have comments up here at the dais. Would anyone from the public like to speak on this issue? Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Seeing no further public comments. Rodney, were you up? Or is there any further discussion? We have a, we have a motion, we have a second. Go ahead, Ms. Ramswell.
I'm just trying to wrap my head around this. So why would we want to go ahead and rezone or look at changing this one piece when we just had earlier discussion that we're continuing to discuss putting it all in alignment in some fashion? It just doesn't make sense to me.
I think part of that discussion was we were maybe thinking about doing all that town center anyways, which is what they're asking for.
Right, but why pick and choose by parcel? We need to look at the...
Because they have a contract for 11-acre piece of property and they want to develop a long-term residential area in the town center, which fits right in with town center vision and concept, is why I'm in favor of it personally, is because it's actually, it's not a, well, we have the car dealership tried to be in the town center five or six months ago. This is actually something that falls within the town center requirements. I mean, I, your point is well-taken.
It looks like it can be something beautiful, but I just don't want to, when we're in the process of looking at it all and getting it all in alignment, it just seems weird to do one. But I understand where y'all are coming from.
Yeah, it's, it's a business issue for them. They got a contract and they need to execute the contract in a timely manner. Mr. Manchul.
To your point, sir, do we have a timeframe on how much time they have? In other words, could we do the workshop and not impede their contract?
Like to answer that, sir?
Could you come up?
Yeah, for public, for the public cracker, go ahead and hit the button again.
I don't know what the, what the city's timeframe would be to answer that question. I think...
He's asking really, what's yours?
What's mine, okay. Yeah, I mean, we have, currently, we have a due diligence period that's up in 30 days. And then we would have another 60 days to close. So we would want to obviously know that we're zoned and moving towards working with the city on the next steps before we would be able to do that.
That gives us 90 days to get this job done.
You have as long as you all want to get the job done. It's up to them based on the comments that you make if they want to proceed with their contract and be at risk or not, if you don't make a decision right now.
Well, when were you thinking on doing the workshop, Lance?
This will be number three?
Hello, Lance.
We can do it as, I mean, honestly, I was looking at next week and the week after.
Okay, and this is the first reading that we just had a motion on, correct? So it'd have to go through a second reading as well, correct? And if we're going to rezone, does the LPA have to take a look at it?
They already have.
They already have. And what was their recommendations?
They had a vote of five to one recommending approval.
Okay, so that, so, so our advisory panel reviewed all this and they recommended that we pass this motion and move it on to a second reading.
They recommended that you approve it on.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, so we have a motion, we have a second. I don't have anybody else in line. We gave opportunity for public discussion, so let's go ahead and take this to a vote. How do I do that? I never get to vote. All right. And then I confirm. Eyes have it, so moved. Take this to second reading. That's my first experience, so. How can you have a dead battery when you never use a machine? All right, Mr. Attorney.
We have the first reading of ordinance number 18-29-CC. An ordinance of the City of Destin, Florida, relating to occupancy limits for short-term rentals, providing for authority, providing for findings of fact, providing for amendment of code of ordinances, Article 6, registration of short-term rentals, amending section 13-108, local responsible party required, amending section 13-114, posting of signage, creating section 13-117, occupancy limits, creating section 13-118, exemption for pre-existing agreements, providing for incorporation into the code of ordinances, providing for conflicting provisions, providing for several ability, and providing for an effective date. And this is a public hearing.
Thank you, sir. Well, we'll move right into the public hearing process before we go any further. I just want to remind everybody, you have a three-minute timeframe. First up will be Karen Lugo. I hope I, is it Lugo? Yes, all right. Up next will be Laura Samson. Just hit the red button, state your name, where you're from.
Karen Lugo, I'm from Austin, Texas, but I own 10104 San Print in Destin, in the dunes of Destin. I am a constitutional law attorney and I am also the homeowner of two properties. I am not an attorney registered in Florida. Tonight, I am not addressing what you are doing with this ordinance and whether you have the authority to regulate short-term rentals, but I am challenging everything about how you have done it. At no time was the homeowner considered. I have talked to rental management companies and it's likely that less than 5% of the vacation homeowners who were the target of this ordinance are even aware. The almost 800 homeowners who will be impacted by this ordinance were never directly informed. We were not considered as stakeholders, even though we are the stakeholder. Your zoning act, there are statutes that describe your zoning powers at the state level. And you were informed when you address the intensity of use or you redefine property owner rights that, that the ordinance must be developed and applied with sensitivity for private property rights and not be unduly restrictive. And property owners must be free from actions by others which would harm their property or constitute an inordinate burden. I have listened to hours and hours and days of the Short-Term Rental Task Force audio. I've looked at the minutes. The good stuff is not in the minutes. That task force was egregiously biased. There were seven members, five of them were intent on regulating occupancy in short-term rental homes. Two of the task force members had anything to do with, with short-term rentals. One of those was a small-time kind of management company, the other was a large one. Not one person was a homeowner. The management company, smaller one, owned a few homes. Nobody was a homeowner who was consulted on this task force. I can't even list, and I have no time tonight unfortunately, to talk about the numbers of horror stories. And I know that my experience in this business over 20 years is very, very different from what I heard in those sessions. I talk to all of my renters, I call them guests. I've had thousands over 20 years. I am very closely, closely connected with everyone that stays in my homes. So I don't, when it comes to a legal proceeding, how you accept recommendations from a task force when there wasn't even care to find out that these people were balanced in their approach to the issue, I find highly problematic. So what, what should have happened according to most land use regulations or zoning ordinances that describe your powers is there should have been city factual findings. A city staff usually prepares for the city the findings which will tell the city how many Burt Harris claims might there be, how much might that cost? What of the new ordinances regarding noise and trash and traffic and parking are already working?
Karen, your time's up unfortunately. Can you wrap it up, next 15 seconds?
Yes, I can. So what is absent is the, is the factual findings that you should have had to inform you as to how to develop this ordinance. My last comment is, when looking at the ordinance, I have a home with very large bedrooms. Somebody else could have 10 bedrooms and count two compared to my four because some of mine are 600 square feet in size. So there, there are inequities that underlie this as well. But I just want to say, if you're going to do this, to back up and look at facts and make sure that the homeowners are contacted, because I am here to tell you that they do not know about this, have not been informed, and it will be quite a shock to a lot of them.
Thank you, ma'am. Hold your applause, please. We're not, this is not a cheerleading exercise. We want to give everybody an opportunity to say their piece, address the council and the mayor in the process. Don't direct any comments to any other people in the room or any other groups. I'd appreciate it if, can't abide by those rules, I'll ask you to leave the podium. Laura.
My name is Laura Samson. I live at 612 Choctaw Drive in Destin. I apologize, but as far as the rules of order associated with here, because the fact of the matter is, frankly, I agree with absolutely everything this woman has said. I do not know her, I didn't know her even before this. I have been at the, when I was 24-years-old, I bought my first piece of property in Destin, my husband and I did, both officers in the Marine Corps. And ever since then, we've been coming back there. I've retired after 29 years, I now work for Lockheed Martin. And I still own, at different points in time, we owned condos and then we were able, with the help of my parents, to sell our condos and purchase a home in Crystal Beach, which we now rent. I casually was made aware of this about a year ago. I remember reading it in the paper. And then I've kind of watched it and then I was actually here for jury duty and I heard about it at the courthouse, what was, that this was going down tonight. And I was absolutely shocked by the fact that I thought, how did I allow myself to be so disengaged and see something that I've worked for, for 30 years, now being regulated by a body that I really don't know or understand, other than the fact that I'm an avid voter, you know, from that perspective? So I'm totally engaged and committed in this city as my home and the home of my husband and my entire family, which is here with me. I do not understand what is happening. As someone who's personally managed our properties over the last 25 years from afar and close up, the fact of the matter is, we have 1,000 ordinances out there right now, all of which need to be enforced and in our home are enforced. And as spoken, I have a home with a little, we call it the big house and the little house, the big house in the back, the little house in the front. And the fact of the matter is, there's adequate parking, we understand about, we understand all the rules associated with the, with the trash. If there's any type of noise, it needs to be enforced. Enforce the regulations we have, that is my primary number-one objective. This notion of thinking you're going to understand the number of human beings sleeping in a bed, I can't begin to even understand how we think we're going to regulate that or enforce it. That must be the word I'm actually looking for. How we would even begin to enforce this, I don't understand. And I think we're just adding layer and layer on top of bureaucracy when we need to be focusing on enforcing that which we have on the books right now. And the other side of it, a little bit emotional about it, is the simple fact that as I live on Holiday Isle, I have watched over the last two years, the debate going on between renters versus non-renters. And now frankly, you add into this the entire mix of condo owners versus single resident owners. I don't understand it. This city is a city where I, from the age of six-years-old, started coming to as a renter. And back in the day, we used to have, I remember being thrilled with even having the finances to put our small family into one of these condos. All that aside, stick to what we have, let's enforce those regulations we have. And please, let's stop this.
Thank you, ma'am. That's all I have for cars. Does anyone else like to step up and have a word?
Good evening, Councilmembers. Mayor, my name is Sean Hickey. I live at 93 Woodward. I'm a resident of... My name is Sean Hickey, I live at 93 Woodward, I'm a resident of Destin, have been for some time now. And very happy that there was a short-term rental workshop committee. I attended the meetings, and yes, there were representative homeowners on that committee. I was in attendance, I was not a member of it, number one. Number two, I fully support the ordinance that is proposed, because I live in Crystal Beach, and I see the adverse impacts of non-resident property owners packing houses to make a profit. And I see the people on the streets, the overpacking of cars, the noise late at night, the police coming, people having wild parties over on Shiro with strobe lights and all that stuff. So, that's just a macro comment I wanted to make upfront. So, I fully support this ordinance. Now, what I'm about to say sounds kind of minor, but if you look at Section 13-114 under post-signage, the signs that's supposed to be put out in front of the houses, 24 by 48, you know, it was two-feet by four-feet, this is the sign that they propose to put out in front of the house. I think that's a little large to put it out in front of the house. They need to revisit that, both, and just look at it carefully on the size. Maybe it should be smaller. It's also a potential danger, if there's a hurricane, this thing could come flying off and hit something. And that's on page four of the ordinance, Section 13-114. If you look on page six of the ordinance, just a question, I'm not an attorney, and I know attorneys have all kinds of different opinions, and if you don't like that one, you can hire one for tomorrow. The paragraph is 13-117, paragraph F, line four, there's a word there, "may." It's saying that if a person tries to grandfather their property, which is a reasonable thing to do, they can, they may apply for the status of grandfather for a period of five-years so as to occupancy limits, and "may" cap its occupancy. I think the term probably, and our attorney can look at this, probably should be "shall" cap, because if you read the paragraph, it seems to imply that your intent is to apply the rules. And that's why I'm saying it probably should be "shall," that's all, just a minor difference. So, those are two minor comments. Again, I own a home in Crystal Beach, and I fully support what this committee has done. I think it's a major step forward in controlling our problems. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else in the audience? Come on up.
Mayor, City Councilman, my name's Jason Sprinkle, I live at 437 Captain Circle. As you know, I sat on the Short-Term Rental Task Force, and I own 360 Blue. Two quick points, one is, I would implore the council to give the comprehensive changes that were put into effect at the request of the Short-Term Task Force a chance to work, a season to work. I've talked to enough property manager owners on our program and enough property management company owners to know that the, you know, the risk of Burt Harris claims is not a risk, it's a certainty. And it's not a, it's not a, out of ill-will towards the city, it's out of a, you know, just a desire to protect their economic interests. And so, if you make a change now as opposed to giving a chance for these ordinances that we just passed, a chance to work, particularly with the new enforcement personnel that we have on task, then I think that the city just has to deal with the reality that we're going to have a lot of Burt Harris claims. And then lastly, two quick comments on the ordinance on page six. And I spoke with Ms. Kopp about this, I think the intent is right, I think the language does not reflect the intent. The intent, as I understand it, is that if you apply for grandfathering and you meet all the specifically identified criteria under number one, or I, one, two, and three, that you will be grandfathered in for five-years at your current occupancy without the discretion of staff, and that's just not reflected in the draft. So, that's a very important provision, I think, in getting by into this provision if you go forward with it. And then lastly, on page number eight, under Section 13-118, under the first paragraph, it provides that all bookings made subsequent to the enactment of this ordinance are subject to the provisions of this ordinance. Just as a logistical compromise, I would suggest a week or two period for you to have, you know, once the ordinance is passed, if it is, to have it not apply to booking so that you have a chance to change any kind of marketing before those first few weeks bookings are impacted, so you don't have people that see it sleeps 15 and they book it that way, and then it's not enforced. But my vote is give it a chance to work. We worked hard on those changes, and I think if you enforce them, they will have the impact that they're desired, and if not, you can come back at the end of the season and you can say, "I told you so," and at least you'll have given it a fair shot before you have, you know, the claims facing you on the Burt Harris side. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else like to come up? Sally? Don't forget to state your name.
Yes, hello, I'm Sally Mauer, 514 Vera Cruz. I have a short-term rental. I don't want to belabor the things that I've said in the past meetings, but my home sleeps 18 in beds. That's three king-size beds, five queen-size beds, and two twins. And they're not crowded in the rooms, the rooms are big, there's dressers in between, there's enmore's. They're very good size. I advertise to sleep for 18, and sometimes I get less, sometimes it's right at it. That does not include any sofa sleepers, that's 18 people in beds. If code enforcement is going to enforce this by checking the internet, if I have to change my internet on VRBO and on Airbnb, if I say I can only sleep 14 people, because it's a six-bedroom house, is the ordinance 2 plus 4 or 2 plus 2? I couldn't understand. Oh, you haven't made that decision yet. Well, so if I -- Neither. I think it's my house, I should be able to decide how many people I can accommodate. And it's my property right. I own the house, I've owned it a long time, it's my property right. The other thing that I just want to say real quickly is, why are we targeting just the short, single-family residents? Why do we not charge all the condos, first of all, a rental fee? And why don't they have to go by any occupancy limits? They can sleep however many people they want in their condos. And it's not fair that we're targeting the single-family residents. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Ben? And I'll get you next.
Ben Giles, 1159 Trune Drive, Marymore Beach. I don't really understand with what y'all are doing with this ordinance. It seems more like it's a, an advertising ordinance than an occupancy ordinance. For the most part, it's going to be business as usual for 80 to 90% of these homes. The other 10 to 20% are going to file Burt Harris claims. The five-year grandfathering was added to potentially reduce Burt Harris claims, but property values are going to be reduced the day this is passed. Who would buy a vacation rental knowing that in five-years, occupancy will drop to a level that makes it a bad investment? Even owners who don't currently rent their property will want to protect their property rights because a future buyer may be an investor interested in operating their properties as a rental. It's in the best interest of every owner, whether owner-occupied, short or long-term rental, to file a claim to protect their long-term value. Marketing departments for various attorneys in town are going to send letters out to these owners saying, you know, "File your Burt Harris claim now before your property is permanently devalued by the City of Destin." Make no mistake, when word gets out, there's going to be hundreds of Burt Harris claims filed. If there are 200 Burt Harris claims filed, and you have an appraisal for each one at $3,000 in appraisal, that's $600,000 the city's going to spend on appraisals. And where is the council going to find the time for hundreds of these hearings, not to mention all the grandfathering hearings? What staff are you going to have to hire, and what are you going to have to pay to deal with all this? And is council really willing to go to court and potentially face tens of millions of dollars in judgments with no insurance to pay for it? With all this in mind, I think there's a better path we can go down. There's got to be better solutions out there than this.
Thank you, Ben. Taking notes.
I just, I have a question.
State your name for the public record.
Bill Reddington, 722 Vintage Circle, resident of Destin since 2000. First visit here was in 1980. Been here many times, many, many times. The first lady that spoke, she brought up a really good point, okay? Nobody has contacted any of those people that own a property here to tell them and advise them what is going on, okay? I'm going to make an offer to the city because I have all those people in my database, okay? I would be more than happy to do a mailing to them with whatever your attorney puts together, okay? To tell them and inform them what's going on here, because this is like Revolutionary War-type stuff again. It's taxation with no representation, okay? And I'm just going to make that offer to y'all, because I already got them in my database, okay? It's pretty easy, I just push a button that says "print," okay? So, and in reality to the sign, if I still owned a house down there, I wouldn't put a sign up. I'm sorry, that's just no. That's just, that's like repeat of history many years ago, putting signs on people's properties. And that's just no. I don't think y'all have the right to do that. But anyway, I will make that offer to the city because I'd like to see this solved in the correct way. And the other gentleman that mentioned all the ordinances that we have on the books already, why don't y'all start enforcing them? That's the part I don't understand. If somebody's making noise, call the police, you know? Pretty easy. So, anyway, thank you so much for listening again.
Thank you for being here, Bill. Looking around the room, ma'am? Go Tiger.
Down below.
Down below.
April Culp, 10 Magnolia Drive, Holiday Isle. Been there since 1967. My parents built out there. Growing up in Destin, Destin has been promoting rentals, short-term rentals, for a long time. That's what Destin does, that's what it's all about, is tourism. Short-term rentals, you come here, you love it, you want to live here, and then you want to change it. We bought this, you know, we built this house over the years, now we have ended up having to do short-term rentals to keep up with the taxes and the insurance living on Holiday Isle. And now I find out you want to tell me I can't do it anymore without restrictions. And I got a, on December 2nd, I got a certified mail letter for a hearing for January 2nd, that I left my trash can out past midnight. There was a photograph taken of my trash can at 12:07 a.m. Midnight. Who does that? And then a certified letter for a hearing because I left my trash can out. I have been fighting cancer for the last three-years. I wasn't able to go and take my trash can and bring it back in, my husband was out of town. And I get this, and...
Ms. April, was that Holiday Isle Improvement Association did that, or is that the City of Destin?
Yes, yes, Holiday Isle Improvement. And they also said, when I went to the hearing, that they could charge me a $100 fine for this violation, and that I was lucky that the city didn't do it because they could do it to me too and charge me $250. And if I say anything, they can even raise it even more. I mean, this is what we're looking at on Holiday Isle. I mean, this is a little bit overstepping your powers, and I feel targeted. I feel, I mean, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. This is what we're looking at, and that's what I see that is happening up here with the city now getting involved via Mr. Fisher and that whole thing with short-term rentals.
Ma'am, I just ask you to just keep your comments directed towards us, okay?
And I feel targeted because we have done short-term rentals in the past, and I had planned on doing it again because I have to. And this is going to ruin my property value, we've spent hundreds of thousands of dollars. People have millions of dollars promoting what the city and Holiday Isle has wanted us to do. Now we're doing it, and now they're telling us, no, we don't like it anymore.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am, appreciate it. We got a couple more. Marcy, you can come up now, you don't have to always be last, unless you like being last all the time. Go ahead, sir. Come on.
All right. Ed Smith, live here in Destin, pardon? I would expect that coming from you. Anyway, for background, moved here from Texas in 1977, been a real estate broker here in Destin since 1987, 32-years now. Had an office presence here in the city limits for 32-years. So, just to give you background, my perspective. We don't have a specific problem with occupancy in these properties. We have a problem with enforcement, because it doesn't matter if you pass an ordinance that says you can have one person per bedroom, or you can have 10 persons per bedroom. The problem is, there's no enforcement with regard to the ordinances that are already on the books. That is our problem, you know? Because if you had 50 people in a three-bedroom home, but there were no cars all over the streets, no cars in the front yard, there's no garbage, there's no noise, there's no nothing, who would care? Nobody would care. Am I right? Does anybody agree with me? Okay.
Unless the building catches on fire.
Yeah.
I said unless the building catches on fire.
Just address myself in the council, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I apologize, I digress, because it's just, it's just how I'm wired, I'm sorry. I apologize.
I just don't want any eggs or tomatoes or anything like that coming out of the audience. So, just address us.
All right.
Now, I'll give you a few seconds seeing how I took up some of your time.
That's okay, I really had not a whole lot more to add than that, but whatever y'all pass, it's not going, it's moot unless we possess the ability to enforce regulations. I mean, I lived on Holiday Isle for a while, sadly. I was subjected to a little bit of vacation rental annoyance, but the Sheriff's Department always took care of it. If there was noise, the Sheriff's Department would take care of it. We have problems, call the Sheriff's Department, they took care of it. It's an enforcement problem more than an occupancy problem. So, I just hope that y'all will consider that, because I'm a, you know, as a real estate broker here in town, I'm a property rights kind of guy. So, I don't, I hate to take a broad-brush approach, or I hate to see this council take a broad-brush approach towards legislating and restricting the use of properties when that's really not addressing the problem. You can pass all the ordinances or regulations you want to, but until we can enforce what's already on the books, it's not going to make any difference. So, all right, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ed. Marcy?
Marcy Bell, 3 Gulf Breese Court, Holiday Isle, so we all know where I stand on this position, but I wanted to add a couple of things. First of all, if you own property, it doesn't make it your home. It's property, you're a property owner, not a homeowner. And when your rights cross the path of my nose, you've basically crossed my rights as a property owner and a homeowner. This is a big, huge mess all over the place, and I will say it until I am blue in the face. There's a problem. I don't know how you're going to fix it, but there's a problem. When you have 18 people going into a house... When you have 18 people going into a house the size of what I live in, where three of us live, and it's tight quarters, and 18 people are going in, and there's nothing to stop that from happening because there's no 2 plus 2, 2 plus 4, whatever, that's a problem.
Thank you, Ms. Bell. Last call for comments. Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion so we can get on with this ordinance.
I have a motion, Mayor. I move that to continue the ordinance 18-29-CC until the second meeting in October, which will be the 21st of 2019, to allow the Code Enforcement Division to get, Compliance Division, to gather data and enforce the current rules and ordinances that regulate the short-term rentals. And at that time, determine if other regulations and other rules need to be applied.
Did you get that right? We have a motion made. Do I have a second? Motion dies for lack of a second. Mr. Oberdehr.
Okay, I don't have a motion. I just have, I mean, I just have a couple of questions about the ordinance as it's written now. If, on page 6 of 9, it doesn't matter which regulation you look at because everything's the same except the 2 plus 2 or 2 plus 4. But this isn't addressing 2 plus 2 or 2 plus 4. On page 6 of 9, under item F, it talks about grandfathering. And what they want to do, I guess, is if we grandfather it, it's only for properties that are currently being rented. And so my question would be, if you have a valid development order that's been issued by the City of Destin, and you are under construction or anticipating that you're going to start construction, and you've done this in good faith with the idea that you're going to develop this property and then use it as a rental property, but it doesn't sound to me like, right now, that they're allowed to go under the grandfathering clause. And so I'm wondering if that is something that we should add? Because it's not only the people that currently are using their rentals, but people that are anticipating using rentals, they've applied for a development order and they have a development order. So that'd be my first question.
Skip, let Ms. Cobb answer that for you before you go to your second one. Go ahead, Ms. Cobb.
So that's correct. If you wanted it to apply to those with the DO, you would want us to tweak the language in between now and second reading. But that change would not require it to go back to first reading.
Excellent, okay. And then the other thing that I have is just that, then when you go farther on down in that same, on that same page, when they do make this grandfathering application, it says that the city staff, in consultation with the city land use attorney, shall make a written determination as to the maximum occupancy of such short-term rental. And so my question is, what guidelines are you going to use? Or what, I mean, how are you going to say what they can use or how many they can have in there?
The guidelines are the, right above it, where it says that the applicant would provide verifiable written proof that the use as a short-term rental was existing and legally established as of the effective date of the ordinance, which, as of right now, we have January 21st, 2019. And number two and three as well. The number of bedrooms was existing and legally established. There aren't code compliance issues at the property. There's not intended to be any discretion with staff. If those criteria are met, they'd be grandfathered.
Okay, so even though, so let's say, for example, if we pass this 2 plus 2 or 2 plus 4, whatever it is, and they tell you, and they go in, they apply for this grandfathering thing, and they tell you, okay, we've got five bedrooms, but they're not limited to the 2 plus 2 or 2 plus 4 with those five bedrooms. So you're going to tell them how many they are authorized to put in that property? Because if they're limited to 2 plus 2 or 2 plus 4, then they're not being grandfathered. They're being, they're just having to fall under the new guidelines.
No, no, it means whatever they have legally before the ordinance would be grandfathered for the five years. So if they had more than 2 and 2 or 2 and 4, whatever one you pass, they would be grandfathered with the higher number for the five years.
Okay, but now there are no limits, right? You can, as many as you can stuff in there.
They wouldn't be held to the limits. They'd be grandfathered.
And grandfathered with no limits on how many they can put in the house?
But they'd be grandfathered to the number that's in their DO or whatever their documents are that was permitted. If it's, if there's not a specific number based on parking and all of that, then they would not have a number for five years.
Okay, got it.
Martler.
Okay, Kim. So, we monitor the advertising, and they say they're supposed to have a certain number and a certain occupancy. Code compliance, Joey has already stated that we're not going to go headcount. So how are we going to enforce it?
That's it.
We can advertise it, but we can advertise it, but just like the man said with the signs. We have, nobody reads signs. Nobody's going to read the advertisement. How are we going to enforce it?
No, we don't advertise it. We monitor the advertisements that the short-term rental...
Okay, so the advertisements, we say, they say that, and that's what they say. But then, more people are in that unit than what is advertised. How are we going to enforce the rule to begin with?
This ordinance is not going to attempt to address that. It's attempting to address how they advertise. And it's to be looked at in conjunction with the other ordinances that the city already has in place dealing with noise, trash, parking, and so on. Potentially, if the commercial events ordinance passes as well, that would also be factored in. So if you have, you know, 50 people at a commercial event that violates the ordinance, you wouldn't be talking about occupancy, you'd be talking about that. So it's not the only ordinance that the city has. But this particular ordinance is intended to be enforced by reviewing their advertising and making sure that their signage provides for the appropriate occupancy.
But we don't even know how the other ordinances we already have in place are going to work because we haven't even had a chance to enforce those yet. But we're putting the cart before the horse. Go ahead and put the occupancy in there and say, well, that's it.
And that's a decision for the council.
I understand. And my frustration is, is that we're trying to do something without taking everything into consideration. I mean, short of a warrant to go into a property, we're not going to be able to count heads. Joey has already said he's not going to count heads. We can monitor, we can change it to monitor what they're advertising, but you've got maybe, you know, 10, 20 bad apples out of 100 and 200 and something short-term rentals that are causing a problem. We should, as I stated, we should collect the data and then figure out where the problem lies and attack or address those that are not in compliance and not restrict or however you want to use the wording, everybody else that is, is trying to do the right thing. And that's still my opinion.
Mr. Destin.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to move to direct staff to advertise Exhibit B, which is the 2 plus 4 portion of the ordinance 1829-CC, and have it for second reading on January 21st.
I'll second that.
Okay, I got a motion, and I have a second. We've had a little bit of discussion. Anyone else would like to weigh in? My only comments, Ms. Ramswell, go ahead.
Did we want to talk a little bit about the signage and the size of the signage and the fact that it was increased from 18 by 24 to 2 foot by 4 foot?
Yes, that change was made at the request of staff, and I'll defer to our community development director for his reasoning. But basically, as I had mentioned to you earlier in our conversation, I understand it's to allow the information that we're requiring to fit on the sign.
That's basically the reasoning. We're asking for all that information to be seen from the runway so that our code enforcement don't have to go on the property, they can see it from the road.
I guess what I'm looking at is, number one, that's a huge sign. And then I think about, like, real estate signs that are much smaller, but I can clearly see a name and a phone number from the road. Can you, I mean...
There is more information beyond just the contact information. I think they've got to put how many parking spaces they have, the occupancy, and all that. We certainly can take another look at it, but we wanted to make sure that that information is seen from the road for our code enforcement officer to be effective.
I mean, I certainly agree it needs to be on there. I just was hoping that there was a way to try to make that smaller, but if no one else has an issue with that. I just, I want to address a few things that were said by various folks. This is not an effort to stop tourism or to stop people coming into town and renting properties. Not at all. Clearly, we are a town built on fishing and visitors coming here to enjoy our beaches and everything else we have to offer. We want people to come, but we want the people that live here full-time to be able to enjoy their lives, to have a quality of life. Nobody wants to be next door to someone that's having a raucous party at 1:00 or 2:00 in the morning, or even 4:00 in the afternoon, and there's 100 people. We've got to have some sort of parameters, and it hasn't worked. I think we can all safely say that we've driven by houses, we've seen this occurring, Crystal Beach, Holiday Isle. I've even seen it coming across 98, and that's another issue we're starting to tackle is now we've got rentals appearing in Indian Bayou, and that's not even allowed over there. So then we look at what we even have in our own code, and if there's 25 people or more in a home, it's classified as a hotel. And it's done that way for a reason. It's done that way because with that many folks in a residence, or let's say in a structure, you need to have certain equipment, sprinklers. There are certain safety measures that have to be taken into consideration. When you've got a single-family residential home, keep in mind, single-family residential, it's built for a single-family residence. It's not built for continuous parties of tons and tons of people. But I go back to the point, we don't want to stop this process. And I don't see, I've heard a few people talk about the decrease in property values. There, I'm hearing from people that have lived here and are moving away because they're miserable and they can hardly sell their house for what it's worth because people come to look at the house and there's a party next door. So, you know, there's two sides to look at. And for me, meeting in the middle, even meeting in the middle, we've got an air on the side of our residents, the people that live here, that elect us, that pay taxes here. We've got to do the right thing by them, and what we feel in our hearts is the right thing here. We don't want to hinder people from making money and renting their properties, but we don't want to hinder people from living their lives and being happy where they are. One other thing I did want to say is, there was a speaker that kind of picked apart the committee that was appointed and selected. That committee was purposely a diverse group of people. We did have homeowners that weren't rental agents. She stated that there were none. I know of at least two offhand that were pure homeowners and were not rental agents and not rental property managers or renting properties. We had, as she had mentioned, we did have some small property managers, if you will. We had some large property managers. We had people that lived here full-time, we had people that did not live here full-time. We deliberately wanted a diverse body so that we could hear different voices and that the committee could listen to these different voices and work it out together, reach a consensus. And they did a terrific job. And anyone that wants to pick apart and say they didn't do a good job or it was biased, that to me is an insult, not only to the hard work that committee put in, but to what this council chose to do, which was to put it in the hands of the public, to work and then bring it back to us so that we could help reach a nice, happy medium that really targeted the issue. So with that said, I'm fully in support of the motion as made this evening. I think we could look at, you know, let's see how 2 plus 4 works. Hopefully, it'll be a great thing, and if it's not, we can revisit it. That's the beauty of things. We can always go back and revisit. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ramswell. Kyron, you had a question for Ms. Cobb.
Yes, Ms. Cobb. I've got a hypothetical question for you. Hypothetically, two identical houses side by side, one's a short-term rental and one's a resident, same identical situation might happen. The resident has a whole bunch of people over and has a party. Are we going to regulate them?
If it's for commercial purposes, yes.
No, I'm talking about it's just, everybody's over for an Alabama football game.
Then no.
Okay.
Both houses. Either way, the issue isn't whether they're a short-term rental or a residence, it's whether they are having the party for a commercial gain or not.
If they're making noise, they can call the cops. We have a motion in a second. We've had comments. My, I have two comments. One is, I think Mr. Destin's motion probably mitigates our exposure to Burt Harris' claims by about 78%. I think using some of the information that was given by our short-term rental company. The only way to eliminate risk completely would be to not do occupancy at this time at all and let the existing new code enforcement department enforce the three major complaints we've gotten from the short-term rental task force, noise, parking, and trash. That's going to be Joey's job anyways. So I think the 2 plus 4 is probably a compromise between those two. In that item B, there is a cap of 28 or 24, and I, so I'm sure we're going to get some Burt Harris' claims on that. So that's just life as we see it. So I think it was an excellent compromise, sir. Mr. Menchel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The topic of short-term rental has obviously been on everybody's mind for a long time. And the committee that was put together obviously came up with some ideas. The one thing that I would like to see and like to discuss is, regardless which way we go, is we obviously have a code compliance section now that we're looking to see big things from. I think we have to do multiple things. Number one, maybe in this ordinance, add something in there about, we need a mandatory 24-hour-a-day hotline that citizens can report. And where I'm going with this is, ultimately, at the end of this rental season, we need to evaluate if 2 plus 4 would work, is working. And the only way you're going to do that is to get reporting from citizens, not just the sheriff's office. People have to call in because we're not going to be able to evaluate this thing. If we did compromise and go with the 2 plus 4, we have to be able, at the end of the rental season, come back and reevaluate it and see how it works. Number one. The second thing is, I don't know if staff, one of the attorneys had, but under the Florida Building Code, it's my understanding that there might be some language in the building code regarding occupancy. Are you aware of that?
Yes, it's one for every 200 square feet. One person for every 200 square feet for residents.
Is there a cap? Or it's just basically on square footage?
No, it's square footage. I'll caveat that by saying it has to also meet the FIRE code.
Any rate, just concluding, I just think that regardless what we do, we have to come back and possibly revisit this thing to see if it's worked. We're going to allow, if we pass the 2 plus 4, if you will, the rental homes an opportunity to police themselves, some of those trouble homes. Give them that opportunity to police. If it doesn't work, then we come back and reevaluate it and take other measures.
Thanks, sir.
Can I just respond about the phone number? That hotline that you asked about? I just wanted to say that doesn't actually have to go in an ordinance. You could direct the city manager and staff to do that.
I was going to point that out. I think we've already kind of talked about that when we were talking about our code enforcement program. All right, we've got, we've got a motion, we have a second. Seeing no further discussion.
Mayor, if I may, sir?
Yes.
Right here. Part of the motion was to bring it back for second reading on January 21st. That's a holiday. Can we make that 22nd?
So amended.
That motion's been amended. Is second, approve it?
Sure.
Sure. Okay, 22nd. Let's vote. We have, eyes have it, so moved. All right. A lot of y'all can go to the ballgame. Up next, item 5E.
Ken?
All right, we'll take a five-minute break before we get into the doc application. Five-minute break.